Okay, hello everybody and good evening. It's 7 o'clock PM. I am the Deputy Town Clerk Amanda Kurtz. Before we get started, I have a few announcements. Tonight's regularly scheduled Herndon Town Council Public Hearing is a virtual meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.23708.2 as amended, the Governor's Executive Orders as amended, and in accordance with Ordinance 20-0-23, continuity of governmental operations during pandemic disaster COVID-19 as amended and readopted by the Herndon Town Council on September 8th, 2020, which supersedes previously adopted amendments. Proper notice of the electronic meeting was provided in accordance with the Code of Virginia. Agenda and meeting materials along with information for viewing the meeting and submitting comments for the record are available on the town's website. The meeting will begin with a roll call to determine a quorum, and all votes, including adjournment, will be by roll call vote. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Amanda, and welcome, everyone. It's nice to see you. We had a few glitches trying to get this off the ground, but it looks like everybody's here. So just to ensure, I will call the meeting to order, and as the clerk calls attendance, I'll ask each member of council and our town attorney and town manager to unmute your microphones and respond by clearly stating your name and indicating that you are present. And so I will ask Amanda to please call the roll.
Town Manager?
Bilashton, present.
Town Attorney?
Lisa Yates, here.
Olem?
Olem, here.
Baker?
Baker, present.
Delagula?
Delagula, here.
DeKalb?
DeKalb is present.
Friedrichs?
Friedrichs is present.
McKenna?
McKenna is present.
Merkel?
Merkel is present. So for the record, I have observed that there is a quorum electronically, and we all look cool, calm, and collected, not at all how we were just a couple minutes ago trying to get in. I wanted to say I can't change my name to actually have my name, so now everyone has my phone number. Feel free to give me a call. Looking forward to hearing from you. Before we get started, we do, as many of you know, we've had a very tough week here in Herndon, and I wanted to observe a moment of silence to remember two of our friends and neighbors who passed away suddenly last week within a day of each other, and that would be Vicki Robertson and Lester Zidell. So if you'll join me for a moment of silence to honor their memory. We do have two sets of minutes up for approval this evening. Is there a motion to approve the September 15th work session minutes?
So moved, Friedrichs.
Second, Olem.
We have a motion to approve made by Ms. Friedrichs and seconded by the Vice Mayor. Is there discussion on this motion? Okay, seeing none, I will call the question and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Olem?
Olem, yes.
Baker?
Abstain.
Delagula?
Delagula, yes.
DeKalb?
DeKalb votes yes.
Friedrichs?
Friedrichs, yes.
McKenna?
McKenna, yes.
Merkel?
Merkel is yes, and so that carries 6 to 0 with one abstention by Councilmember Baker. Our second set of minutes is to approve the September 22nd public hearing minutes. Is there a motion?
Moved, Friedrichs.
Second, Olem.
A discussion on the motion, anyone? Okay, seeing none, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Olem?
Olem, yes.
Baker?
Alabstein.
Delagula?
Delagula, yes.
DeKalb?
DeKalb, yes.
Friedrichs?
Friedrichs, yes.
McKenna?
McKenna, yes.
And Merkel?
Merkel, yes, and so that also carries 6, 0 with one abstention by Councilmember Baker. This brings us to comments section of our agenda, and I'll recognize our town manager for questions for comments this evening.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. It has been our custom since the outset of the COVID-19 pandemic, I just usually give a brief update on what is going on. I just want to inform you that the county is collectively, all of the county, including the town of Herndon, is doing okay. They're averaging about 70 to 80 new cases per day. Hospitalizations still remain very low in terms of the numbers going in, about six per day, and deaths remain also very low. The percent positivity rate, which is not a great indicator, but it is one that gets quoted quite a bit, is sitting at about 3.8%. So it is, we're just doing okay and trudging along right now, and because of the things that we've been doing, and just to remind people that we need to continue to socially distance, we need to continue to wear masks, wash hands, stay home if we're feeling ill. If we do test positive, expect a phone call from County Health. Please answer the phone of County Health calls because they're going to do some contact tracing to make sure that people you've been in contact with are also notified. And lastly, one of the things that Dr. Gloria was stressing in my last discussion with her on Friday is that everyone should be getting the flu vaccine this year. It is more important than ever for folks to get the flu vaccine because one of the big fears in the public health sector right now is the flu and COVID kind of merging with very similar symptoms and causing enormous stress on our hospitals, on our doctors, on our healthcare systems. So anything we can do to mitigate that merging of the two diseases is, we must do. So I encourage everyone to seek a flu vaccine this year, and they are available now, so please get out there and get them done. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions about COVID for our town manager at this time, anyone on council? Ms. Friedrichs?
So I'm starting to see in the news signs that there's a second wave coming in Europe, and I was wondering if Dr. Gloria had any prognostications on that one.
She has no direct, this is Bilashton, Town Manager, again, she has not indicated a direct prognostication at this juncture. We have talked about it in very general terms on our calls. You're seeing it, there's some that are believing it's starting to creep in in the northern states, New York, and other places. It is very much on the table. That's why the flu is scaring us greatly because if those two merged, you get a resurgence of the COVID with the normal flu season, it would create enormous stress on the system, and it would put us in some pretty dire situations in terms of hospitalizations and other things. So the public health committee really wants to stress, get flu off the table, get your vaccine, so when that resurgence comes, it's at least not married with the flu.
Thanks. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Ashton? Okay, thank you very much. That does bring us to comments from the council. Who would like to start us off this evening? Or I can just go down the roll. Mr. McKenna?
I just have one thing. We have two officers for the Herndon Police Department retiring at the end of the year, Senior Sergeant John Tachi and Lieutenant Jim Moore. I just want to wish them all the best and love, luck, health, wealth, and happiness. They've served our town very well, very good people. In fact, Jim, not only is he a pretty good golfer, but he actually made the flag that's behind me, so he's a Renaissance man in every sense. So I want to wish both of them well, and Margie, you now have your husband back, so good luck and wish you all well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Who'd like to go next? Ms. Friedrichs?
Well, I obviously want to echo what Mr. McKenna said. That's good news for them and sad news for us, but we know they'll enjoy the future. I just wanted to update you all that I sat in, well, I attended the Fairfax County Economic Advisory Committee meeting, which I do most months, and I'm sure some of us probably already know this, but Fairfax County is working on a framework for developing a recovery strategy for the county. So I assume we'll be piggybacking on some of that information. It was really disheartening to see how badly the hospitality industry has been hurt, and there was a lot of discussion of the digital divide and issues that that has caused and are being ameliorated. But so I'm looking forward to seeing that framework and seeing if we can participate with any of that. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Who would like to go next? I'll just start calling to see if anybody's interested. Ms. Baker?
No, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Mr. DeKalb?
I do not have any comments at this moment, Madam Mayor.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Delagula?
No comments, but I guess I want to put a plug in for a local fundraiser. So if folks aren't busy and they're in the spirit of Oktoberfest on the 24th, from 3 to 7, the Green Lizard Foundation, which is the sort of nonprofit arm of the Green Lizard Cycling right here in town, is throwing a fundraiser, and it's for a great cause. Just to refresh, they provide bicycles and health and wellness information to folks and kids that can't necessarily afford it. So it's a great cause. I'll be there. I suggest everyone donate what they can, and if they have bikes and used parts, they take all, so appreciate the help. Thanks.
Thank you. It was about a year ago they kicked that off, I think. I remember recognizing that. Thanks for the plug. Madam Vice Mayor?
Yes, for the record, I've had my flu shot, and you can get those all over at our local pharmacy, so get out there. I don't think they've got as many lines. I had to go twice because of the line the first time. Fall cleanup next week, our fall cleanup on your regular trash day. So if you think it's recyclable, put it out a couple of days early. Don't tell anyone I told you to do that because someone might drive by and pick it up and reuse it instead of taking it to the Fairfax County dump. The other is, I just want to give a shout out to our first responders. I had to experience firsthand meeting the fire department and the Herndon Police last week, and I just want to say that the individuals from the fire department, the paramedics, as well as our police were nothing but professional and compassionate during the whole ordeal. And animal control had to be there as well because there was a dog that needed to be placed, so we're very fortunate to be here, and hope you'll pass that on to the police department. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I just wanted to just shout out once again to our buddy Les Zidell. It is such a loss for the community, and he taught, I know he taught me so much of what I've learned about the arts and building community and land use, and he never hesitated to tell me when I was doing a good job, and he was never shy to tell me when I needed to rethink something. So I will miss him every day, and Sheila, I want to send my special condolences and love to you because I know that both of the losses last week impacted you greatly, so you're surrounded by friends here and we're with you. On that note, not a good way to segue, so I'll just plug ahead, that we, I need to ask whether or not the clerk has received comments for the record, and also whether the clerk has received any transactional disclosure declarations from council on any items that are listed on our agenda this evening.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Comments were received for comments from the audience pertaining to downtown redevelopment and for the general item number six, Ordinance 20-0-57, the tree ordinance. No disclosures were provided by council on any items listed on the agenda this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, that brings us to comments from the audience. This is the portion of the agenda where citizens can come forward and speak on any item that's not listed as either a public, as a public hearing item. It can be anything that's on your mind or a general or consent item. We are beyond thrilled that we have several speakers who signed up to speak this evening, and I will go through the quick process here. I think it will go very smoothly. Tonight, we're using a speakers list to call on those who have registered for comments from the audience to address the council on any item that's not listed on the public hearing items. The Deputy Town Clerk, I guess I need to confirm with you, do we have people who have signed up to speak this evening?
Yes, Madam Mayor, there are three registered speakers.
Okay, great, thank you. That's what I thought. So I will recognize speakers in the order that they signed up with the clerk's office this afternoon, and I will announce the name of the speaker so that they're ready when it is their turn to speak. We will pause briefly while IT enables the speaker's ability to address the council. Each speaker will have up to three minutes and should state their name and address for the record. A timer will appear on the WebEx screen, so please try to start wrapping up when you see that you have 30 seconds left. And if staff sees that you're having trouble connecting, the clerk's office will contact you to be sure that we can add your comments to the record and see what assistance may be provided. So hopefully our speakers will have better luck than all of us did getting on this evening. Our first speaker, I hope I'm saying his last name correctly, is Sherri Van Sloane, and she will be followed by Danielle Scherf and finally Stephen Porter. So I will call on Sherri to, I was about to say step forward, but we're going to click you in, and please state your name and address for the record. We look forward to hearing from you. And I believe you're still muted. There you go.
Hi there.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you. I don't know if I'm allowed to do this. I actually sent in an email as well, so if I can do both, that's great. If not, just, okay, okay, great. My name is Sherri Van Sloane. I live at 708 Eldon Street in the Junction Square Development, and I wrote my note to you here today, so I'm sure you've seen that, and some of you actually have responded and said, "Thank you." I just really wanted to put a marker down that we are so appreciative of all of you and all the work that has been done to date on getting this Comstock development effort underway. I know I'm a new resident in the sense of lots of folks have been here for decades and have really been pushing this issue for a long time, so my frustration level is very, very small compared to others who have been doing this for a long time. So I'm just wanting to give you my perspective and my support. I moved to Herndon not even two years ago, was sold on this little town because my friend Laura Tynan and her family lived here, and it was just a unique place that I couldn't find anywhere else, really in Maryland or in Virginia in this area. So I was just really drawn to this really cool environment of a small-town feel, yet there was so much promise that was coming to this town and this future development that was really going to bring Herndon into this really cool little hip town and have a really, I think, a bright future to attract these new families and new growth. So it's been an exciting time. I've been participating in the town council when we could speak up and raise our voice to support the effort, so it's been fun doing that, and it's been fun meeting everyone in the town and just really being part of it. I've been really, really, I can't say enough, good things about the town and how great it's been to be here. I just wanted to support the effort going forward. I know there's a lot of work going on, and I know that's a lot you cannot share with the public, but I guess I just wanted to reiterate, what you can share would be really, really helpful because we're sitting here not understanding what the timeline is, what the next gates are that have to be crossed to kind of get us to the finish line, and a lot of us are just sitting back, kind of really wondering what is going on and just kind of keeping our fingers crossed, which isn't always easy. And so there comes frustration, and I think there comes some people imagining only the worst, right? And so I really just wanted to, you know, voice my concern that we're not being able to get there, if we're not, and why not, and just for all of you to know that we do appreciate everything that you're doing, but we would really love to see this thing go forward and to see our little cute downtown grow into something just bigger and better.
Thank you so much. I think you are singing our song. We can't wait till we have more to share. Thank you so much. Next up is Danielle Scherf, I believe, and our timer inadvertently said three hours, so Sherri almost got a real excited time to speak to us there. So IT is going to make the changes to allow Danielle to speak. It'll take just a couple clicks, and we look forward to hearing from her as well. While we're getting that set up, I think I can, I almost never do this, but I think I can speak for the council and say that we are all working diligently and want to make the best decision possible for the town in this transaction, and as soon as we can share something, we will. And if you think you're frustrated, boy, we are really frustrated, so thank you. Oh, Danielle, I can see you. Welcome. Please state your name and address for the record.
I am Danielle Scherf. Good evening, everybody. I'm a resident of the town, and my address is 710 Hemlock Court. And you've heard this message from me before, but I just wanted to encourage you as you work through some of the finer details of the project. So tonight, I'm using my time to let the council know that I'm still an enthusiastic supporter of downtown Herndon redevelopment and the plan in partnership with Comstock Companies as proposed and as promised and approved. I'm also here as representative of the Neighbors of Downtown Herndon Redevelopment to remind council that the community supports the work that you're doing towards downtown redevelopment and expects it to be completed. The Neighbors Group is an active, engaged community of more than 500, mostly town residents and stakeholders dedicated to supporting the redevelopment to completion. It's only grown in membership since I've talked about it to you last, and their commitment grows along with their numbers in the two years since its inception. I will echo what Sherri said, that frequently our conversations to date have to do with craving more information, so whatever we can learn from you whenever it's time, we're ready to receive that and to support you however we're able. So this group, along with you, has been very patient, and as we've waited for a delayed metro station, a delayed Aslan taproom, and a delayed downtown that's so many, especially Mayor Merkel and the rest of you who worked so hard on since it was initially proposed more than a decade ago, there is more than a little bit of frustration that our public-private partnership is yet to break ground. I want to encourage you to prioritize this project where you're able to do what's needed to deliver the envisioned downtown that we all desire so much, and we're ready to trade our really nice fence and coming soon sign for our groundbreaking and giant scissors. We're ready for the residential units, the arts center, the boutique and restaurant space, and the public space that we were promised. This is critical not just for progress, but also to preserve the identity of this town, this vibrant and small community that we love so much, that we're so deeply invested in. Thank you for your time and your continued work on this essential community-defining project, and we are rooting for you every step of the way.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your comments tonight. And I think our third and final speaker is Stephen Porter, so we'll give IT a chance to welcome him in, and we look forward to hearing from him as well.
Can you hear me?
We can. Good evening.
Good evening. Madam Mayor, members of council, and Mr. Ashton, my name is Stephen Porter, and I reside at 905 Vine Street here in Herndon. I'm also currently a candidate for town council, and as such, have been interacting with a lot of residents in various settings. While I'm sure most of you follow social media, I did want to take the opportunity to put two common concerns on the public record. The first, and probably not surprising considering the other two speakers have also mentioned it, is about the status of the downtown redevelopment. I truly do understand and appreciate the nature of these kinds of negotiations and the need to maintain confidentiality. Also want to thank town staff for their hard work in working to protect Herndon's interest in this important project. I am sure it is a difficult task, especially with the various market uncertainties that the COVID pandemic has introduced. There is, however, a lot of anxiety through the project, and even, my dog apparently is anxious, through the project is continuing to drag out and then it might ultimately fail. I personally do not think this is the case, but on behalf of the town residents who have been talking with me, I did want to get that concern on the record, emphasize that this project is widely supported within the community, and encourage you to publicly share as much as you possibly can to help alleviate concerns. The community, myself, and I'm sure all of you are looking forward to a final agreement and groundbreaking on this decade-plus project. The second item that keeps coming up is revisions to the HPRB guidelines. The community is anxious to see and discuss the proposed changes. There have been several recent council actions around these guidelines in the HPRB, but the updates themselves are still not available for review even in a draft form. I would encourage the council, staff, and board members to make these publicly available as soon as possible so we can begin what I am sure will be a lively community discussion on this important topic. Thank you for your time and for all that you do for our community. I will submit a written copy of these remarks to the clerk for the record. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Porter, and I do believe those guidelines will be coming for us this fall, if I'm not mistaken. We're anxious to get to it, too. So thank you very much. That, I think, completes our comments from the audience. I hope that the residents who came forward to speak will spread the word that it wasn't too terrifying and that it was pretty easy to do because we'd love to hear from more of you every week. So we encourage you to sign up on our speakers list on the website. It's herndon-v-a.gov because we do want to hear from you. Coming up next, we don't have any public hearing items, which is unusual, but it's the case this week, so we'll move straight into general items. The first one is Ordinance 20-0-56 to amend Chapter 66 to develop standards for utility distribution or transmission poles and to establish a maximum fee for administrative review eligible projects. I am sure that our zoning administrator, Dave Stromberg, will tell us what all that means in his staff report, so we look forward to hearing from you, Mr. Stromberg.
Good evening, Mayor Merkel, members of council. I'm David Stromberg, the zoning administrator. So you have an ordinance amendment here before you tonight, and this is a response to the General Assembly legislation that was passed back in 2018 regarding the small cell facilities, also known as administrative review eligible projects, or AREPS. Those are really your 5G antennas that go on top of light poles, utility poles. These are not, you know, traditional cell towers. It's specifically the small cell ordinance. Companion legislation to this was brought before you back in January. That was ZODA number 19-02, and that was for the zoning ordinance, which regulates private property. And again, that was passed by the council in January, and this ordinance amendment is specifically for when these are proposed on public property. So most of what this language does is put in submitted requirements for the applicants to come in. We get applications from all the various carriers and their various engineers who put these together, and it really gives them a baseline for staff to review more efficiently. We are required to give them a response within 60 days, and it also establishes a $500 application fee with each application. Localities are allowed to impose design requirements if they are proposed in a historic district, but they are not allowed to do that outside of the historic district. So far, all of the applications that have been submitted to the town have all been outside of the historic district and all have been located within the right-of-way. We haven't had any proposals for these to be located on private property. That about sums up what this ordinance is, so if the council has any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Thank you, sir. What questions do we have for Mr. Stromberg? Mr. DeKalb?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I remember the work session we had in January, so, Mr. Stromberg, is there any change from what was proposed in January till now? Is anything changed on that?
No, it really just replicates and gets the language in both places. We do have to have it both in the zoning ordinance and in the town code because the public streets are treated differently than private property, so just make sure that it's in all the correct places.
Right, and that $500 application fee, is that flat fee for any application of this nature, of this nature, similar nature, or is it up to $500?
All of these small cell applications, if you're putting it on a new utility pole, are $500. If it's going onto an existing pole, then the maximum we're allowed to charge by the state is $100. Typically, other right-of-way permits that the various utilities will get for any time they need to do any type of work or digging in the right-of-way, those are usually less than $100.
Thank you, Mr. Stromberg. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. What other questions do we have? Ms. Friedrichs?
As a non-civil engineer, on the, I'm just reading through this, there's reference to a standard plate from the MUCD or WAPM. Is it appropriate to... Is it appropriate to define those terms, or are they defined elsewhere in the code?
Those are defined. They are actually referencing standards that's used in the Fairfax County Performance Manual, so it's pretty standard for any work, whether it's in Fairfax or in the town, and it is referenced in other locations within the town where needed as well.
Okay, beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you. What other questions do we have for Mr. Stromberg on the side? Anybody? Mr. Delagula?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Delagula. David, thank you so much for that, and just, I didn't see, but I assume there's nothing here different from last week?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Stromberg before we entertain a motion? Okay. So I will entertain a motion. Ms., Madam Vice Mayor?
This is Olem, Madam Mayor. I move approval of Ordinance 20-0-56.
This is Councilmember McKenna, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve made by the vice mayor, seconded by Councilman McKenna. Discussion on the motion from the motion maker or seconded?
Just seeing the wife of my former, my late husband was an engineer, I just love reading all these engineering things. Thank you.
Somebody's got to, right? Oh, wait, did I say that aloud? Mr. McKenna, or anyone else comments on this item? I just want to thank Mr. Stromberg and staff for sticking it out with us, and it is probably what we thought would have been done quite a while ago, but finally, here we are. So if there's no further discussion, I will ask, I will call the question and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Olem?
Olem, yes.
Baker?
Baker, yes.
Delagula?
Delagula, yes.
DeCall?
DeCall, yes.
Friedrichs?
Friedrichs, yes.
McKenna?
McKenna, yes.
Merkel?
Merkel, yes. That motion carries seven to zero. Our next item is Ordinance 20-0-57, to amend Chapter 26, tree removal on private property to clarify town actions consistent with state code. And I will recognize our town attorney, Lisi Yates, for the staff report on this item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, everyone. The amendments to this ordinance came to our attention in the course of trying to assist a homeowner earlier this spring, early this spring, with an issue with a tree that was contained entirely on private property. It came to my attention that this ordinance drafted some 30 years ago did not accurately reflect the current status of the state code provisions that allow us to address public hazards to life or property that are created by trees on private property. So these amendments were drafted to clarify language and, in some cases, delete inconsistent language that was in the code section, and they reduced down to about four or five items. Earlier this afternoon, based on comments and questions from the work session last week, I submitted to you a revised version. The revised version of this ordinance amendment, I think, even further clarifies exactly how this ordinance is supposed to work and where it does apply. So for those of you that had questions and brought them to my attention, I think it's much clearer now. So the amendment is necessary to clarify language and provide consistency, as I said, with the state code-enabling statutes which grant the locality, in this case, our town, pretty broad authority to regulate with regard to public safety, things that affect the public, not things that are on your private property unless they are specifically stated by the General Assembly and through the Virginia Code. So this amendment, in the first place, clarifies that the town's authority on private property applies only when a dead or diseased tree constitutes a public hazard to life or property. Secondly, it clarifies that the owner means the owner of the property. Third, it clarifies that the remedy in the event an owner fails to prune or trim a tree that creates a public hazard is for the town to remove, I'm sorry, to prune or cut the tree and charge the property owner. Thirdly, fourthly, it clarifies that consistent with state law, the remedy the town has in the event the property owner fails to remove a tree that is diseased or is causing a public hazard is to seek an injunction through the circuit court ordering the removal of the tree on the private property. And in both cases, the removal and the town pruning, charging the cost to the homeowner who's failed to do so. The fifth item is clarifying the violation of this section is punishable by a $250 fine pursuant to Town Code Section 2626 and Town Code Section 114. And then finally, clarifies that the appeal, an appeal of the urban foresters' decision declaring a tree a public hazard is to the town manager and not to the town council. So this evening, staff would be asking that council approve the revised version of the ordinance, which, as I said, I believe further clarifies, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'm sure there are questions. That's a lot of information about trees, and I believe I saw Ms. Friedrichs's hand. Ms. Friedrichs?
I have a few questions. The most important one is, what would be a violation for which you would be charged $250? Is that on top of the town removing the tree?
It is. It is, yes.
Okay. And let's see. The other question I have is, we got a question from a citizen asking whether or not the timeline that we had proposed was appropriate, and I think it is. It's two weeks for removing something that's posing a public danger, but I just wanted to make sure that I had asked that question. Is that right?
You have, that is exactly why. It's actually 15 days, so one day over two weeks. The homeowner's given 15 days after the date of the notice to remove the tree that has been declared a public hazard. So I would say that in this particular case of a public, something that is a public danger, time is of the essence, and I do believe that that is, should be more than enough time for something that is a danger. Yes.
And my third question is, do we need to re-advertise this, or is this enough? I mean, I know it's not a public hearing. Do we have to show the public this for another week, the revisions?
There is no advertising required for town code amendments that aren't some ordinance amendments. Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Other questions from council? Mr. Delagula?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Delagula. I know I asked this last week, but just want to make sure the town manager is still willing to take this off the bucket list or list to do for the council and publicly state he's willing to handle the appeals for us.
This is Bill Ashton, town manager. I'm here to serve.
God bless you.
You're like, what if he says no? No, I appreciate that question, certainly. Any other questions for the town attorney or town staff on this item? So, okay, so seeing none, I will entertain a motion regarding Ordinance 20-0-57, dated and distributed October 13th, as revised, to amend Chapter 26, tree removal on private property. Madam Vice Mayor?
This is Olem. Madam Mayor, I move approval of Ordinance 20-0-57, the revised, proposed.
Thank you. Is there a second?
McKenna, second.
Mr. McKenna. All right, so there's a motion to approve made by the vice mayor, seconded by Mr. McKenna. Is there discussion on this motion? Madam Vice Mayor?
Thank you. This is Olem speaking again. I will say, two weeks is probably going to be sufficient. We had a pretty bad storm quite a few years ago, and our neighbors were out of town, and a tree on their property was posing a public hazard, and several of us contacted them on their vacation to make sure they knew, so we could put them in touch with someone to get that down. And it was down within days, because if it had fallen, it would have been on utility lines. So when there's a public hazard like that, you can get these things done fairly fast, and I don't think Dominion Power wants them lurking anymore either. But I think this is a good move in the right direction, and just remember, if your neighbor has a tree proposing a threat over you, you always have insurance and you can contact the town as well, just so you can get verification if you have a loss. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there further discussion on the motion to approve? Okay, so then I will call the question and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Olem?
Olem, yes.
Baker?
Baker, yes.
Delagula?
Delagula, yes.
DeCall?
DeCall, yes.
Friedrichs?
Friedrichs, yes.
McKenna?
McKenna, yes.
Merkel?
Merkel, yes. And that motion carries unanimously as well. That brings us to our consent agenda, which includes items seven through nine on tonight's agenda. It's a housekeeping ordinance to adopt the statewide building code and two leases at 397 Herndon Parkway. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Moved. Friedrichs?
Okay. The motion by Friedrichs, seconded by the vice mayor. I will call the question and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Olem?
Olem, yes.
Baker?
Baker, yes.
Delagula?
Delagula, yes.
DeCall?
DeCall, yes.
Friedrichs?
Friedrichs, yes.
McKenna?
McKenna, yes.
Merkel?
Merkel, yes. So that motion carries, and that concludes our agenda this evening. Madam Vice Mayor?
Madam Mayor, Olem speaking. I move, we adjourn, see you in no other business.
I'll second. And I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Olem?
Yes, Olem.
Baker?
Baker, yes.
Delagula?
Delagula, yes.
DeCall?
DeCall, yes.
Friedrichs?
Friedrichs, yes.
McKenna?
McKenna, yes.
Merkel?
Merkel, yes. That motion carries, and we stand adjourned at 7:42 PM. Don't get used to that. Thank you, guys.
Good night, everyone. Good night.
Good night.